It's 5:30, is everybody ready? I'm gonna call to see if we're on the special meeting budget workshop. Regular monthly meeting workshop followed Monday 5:30 PM, July 7th, 2021. Candace, invitation please.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for today and we thank you for the many blessings in our lives. We ask that you guide the council tonight as they go over many issues, including the budget for the city. And we just ask that you will guide and lead them to make the right decisions. Heavenly Father, we ask that you be with the families of the flood victims in Texas and just heal their hearts, Lord, and just be with them and heal our country in Jesus' name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the republic of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I didn't do it.
I didn't know what I was doing. We'll call the special meeting tomorrow. I've only been in funds transferred from regions.
I gave y'all just a printout of the one that says water deposits, of course you cannot touch. Any of the other four can be, but that would either have to be obligated for general fund or sewer fund because of how they're done. They're all basically miscellaneous. But I did leave, spoke with Garrett and Garrett and I talked this morning. And so any of those other four can be. I don't know how much y'all want to move. I'm not exactly sure of all the amounts, but as y'all know, we're in a financial bind at the moment.
How much do you need to move or back?
Well, there's 97,000 here, so we're not, we don't need that much. So I'd like to sit, Nikki worked on print checks today and see what's still out. We've got a couple of things out with the fire department still to get done and repaired. And then a couple of big things that come online. So I'd like to give y'all the exact number, but I didn't know until today what we were gonna be able to move and not move. But if you do the CDs, I think, I mean, you're gonna have, you'll do the whole amount.
Do the whole thing, yeah.
So I already had it on here, but like I said, I didn't know until today. So and we worked on the budget all last week and this morning.
Candace, so just so I'm clear, the total available balance that we can move into the general is 73,358,1?
No, it's around 97.
I know, but you said we couldn't move part of it.
Oh, okay, so there's 52,000 in the deposits, you can't touch that. There's four other accounts. You've got
Your CD.
Two CDs, a public funds, and a miscellaneous checking.
Would one of those take care of it or would we have to come back?
It's gonna take more than one for sure. We have, we've got several water sewer repair invoices sitting there. We've still got one large invoice for the fire department sitting there that's not paid. So I'm guessing it's gonna be closer to around 50. And it may be more than that, but I just don't think it's gonna be less than that.
What if you do one season and public funds, how much would that put us up?
Well, if we took the two larger and left the two smaller, we'd still have over 30 in reserve account.
Public fund savings and the PWM?
Yeah.
And there might be some leftover, you're saying, but you're not sure.
Right.
To how much you would be.
Yes, ma'am. If you look on, which we're not to the budget yet, but if you look at the budget, we put the audit numbers in there so that you could see real, you know, more real time of the numbers. And you'll see that like in operating supplies for water and sewer, we've already gone over 30 something or so thousand dollars. And we, the water sewer plant can't help that, it's limping. I mean, you know, so that's not, that's not something that can be helped, but it eats, it ate the budget apart. Also in your city hall fund, our power bills are killing us.
Here, you bring the, Candace has called, we're gonna try to schedule an audit to come out and tell us why. And every, no way we're burning what they say we're burning.
What about this food bank? Is that about all this in there?
Yeah, yeah. This is what's running. You've got the gym, which has no central heat and air, and a few fluorescent lights. You've, you've got the food bank. Nothing else in that building's even working, it's off all the time. And we've got our two office air conditioners. And then once a week, council and agent meets for like four hours. We turn it off and on for them. And then we meet once a week, I mean, once a month.
Is that how much?
We have two different bills. We're trying to still isolate what goes to what, but we're spending anywhere from 2,500 to 3,000 dollars a month in power.
What?
It's somewhere. You know, that's nothing to do with district.
Okay, so are we all in agreement to, for me to call for a motion to approve the public fund savings with the 33,270.93 and the PWM at 32,762.71? Any second?
Yes, ma'am.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carried. And that's to go into the general fund?
Well, it'll go into water sewer and general.
Okay.
Whichever extension it made it for.
All right, with that, I'm gonna close the special meeting and call to open the budget workshop tomorrow.
I put the proposed workshop dates because it's gonna take more than, you know, today. So I listed those on there for y'all to see if those work out.
What date are they on?
Today, two days in August. And then the proposed tentative hearing at the end of August, the 28th.
July 7th, which is the day in August 4th, is the next one?
Yes, ma'am. The reason one of them's on a Thursday is because it has to be advertised and then voted on within 70 days of advertisement. It has to be done between two and five days. So it's gonna have to be, since we only have a once a week paper on Wednesday, it's specific on the days.
Well, they're not, you really got them on the days that we normally have them.
I think it's just the, it's, I think it's the 15th or the 28th.
The 28th is the one that's on the 30th.
Yeah.
And they really, they really had our regular meeting except that one. How about the 15th? So all of them, you know, the 15th is not at a regular meeting either. Yes, it is, it is the 15th. So they don't know what to do from age that we would have to do. But it's all right with me. Is everybody in agreement with those dates? Do we have to vote on that, Michelle?
I would.
Do I have a motion to approve the proposed dates for the budget workshops? Do I have a second?
Yes, ma'am.
Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried.
Y'all have a copy, this is the tram. The proposed rollback for the county is 4.7905. Last year, we went with the rollback. Of course, y'all can choose to do a different amount, up to the maximum levy amount. But I did the numbers on here for you and if we do, that's my scribble on the side on the front page. If we do the rollback, the amount we would get from the millage on the county for property taxes would be about a thousand dollars more than last year. But it wouldn't be raising the millage rate any higher than what the county rate is proposed. So it'd be 136,495 dollars. And how that works out, each part is on this next, on the other pages of that. And y'all can choose to do whatever you want. I just have to have a number to play with for this. There's stuff I have to do on the backside, on the website, to put in there for our proposed, so.
So but if we do it this way, we basically are not raising anything, but we are gaining.
You're gaining a little bit, yeah, around a thousand dollars from last year. Last year, it was 4.641 or something.
That has to be voted on, doesn't it?
Yeah, that's what all these dates will be, so that's just for y'all to, if you want me to look at doing a higher number or not.
How does the rest of the council feel about mayor? You wanna look at a different number or?
I'm gonna look at a different number, I'm making you have to pay it.
I can bring like maybe three different options.
I would.
Going with that rate though, if you look on our first, the budget summary page, that's the number I put in there just so I would have a number to go by. Now keep in mind, even with the maximum, it's not gonna raise it more than 15,000 to 20,000. So that, I just went with this number so we'd have a figure to go by on the budget. We won't have ARPA money this year. You can see what our deficit will be at the current rate of, and we'd have to, we'd have to look at these each page to go, you know, to get an idea of where y'all wanna change the numbers. But we took the audit from this last audit that Josh did. We will have more audit fees this year because of the grants. Once you hit a certain number in grants, you have to do the single audits and they're about, I can't remember, 5 to 8,000. So we've upped our audit budget. The other things. Y'all just wanna take it a page at a time to look at it?
That's not for grant though, is it? That's for total grants.
This is all the grants or?
I know, but they're fees, not.
No, per grant. If, anytime we go over the 750,000, they have to do a an, uh, right.
So that's?
They're not gonna all come in this year, yeah.
Right, but how much do you get per grant?
We haven't done one before. I'm thinking it's maybe 8,000.
That comes out of grant money though.
The audit comes out of our, our pocket, yes, sir. So the, which department y'all wanna look at first? The first page is just your summary?
Yeah.
So really, if you go to the next page, this is just our income. So you kinda gotta go to the next page to, to start looking at it.
Where is it? Mine is in the next page?
Yes, ma'am. I don't know, very honestly, what can be cut from this one besides, I don't know what can be cut from this one. It'll be very minimal because it's, you've got the mayor's salary, council salaries, you've got attorney's fees, any professional fees. Election expenses are in here. Of course, we may have an election, we may not, you know. Professional services is our biggest expenditure. Pest control, that's security services, the IT monitoring. Those are all basically what we've been spending. The insurance, of course, is the worst. The worst part of it. And then, of course, the utilities. The salaries, which is, that stayed the same the last two years. So I think this will be, this is gonna be the hardest one to cut anything from. There almost has to happen. I don't, I mean, you can get rid of 1,750 dollars Christmas, but that's, that's not. I think we probably need to come back to, you know, this one after we've gone through everything else.
So the next page is the fire department?
Fire department's the next. We've taken out the ARPA funding. They are going to get, Shaq said the county told him 72,300, right?
Something like that.
For our quarterly payments?
So is the ARPA money totally gone?
ARPA money's pretty much gone now. It's, it's also been dedicated for the fire. We had to obligate it, you know, with the state. But I think Shaq, did y'all start in August instead of October 1?
Yeah, Mr. Aaron, August.
So we're kind of two months ahead on running out, you see what I'm saying? So we've
That's, I want to say it would be huge one.
Well, that's what we obligated it for, yeah, with the state, yes, sir.
And that, those important, the fire department always runs out in September?
It should run out the end of September, but we started two months early, so I'm not sure. See, last year, we budgeted 4,000 for operating supplies and we spent 24 for operating supplies. And then repairs. Their utility stays right about the same amount all the time.
Well, we did some, you did some extra training for them, you know, the dive in schools and stuff. Those divers, how much were they? 500 each?
Something like that. That's for, just for school and the bottom gear and all that stuff.
I have that. Not that it's that much, but it's something.
Right now, anyway, at current amount, we have it at 96,106.
That's what we spent this year.
From the last audit, yeah.
I hope we don't have to spend that much next year. That's what I said, because some of it needs to be out.
Yeah, you'll be able to.
I don't know what we're gonna do about those firefighters.
City can just be uncovered.
Huh?
City, we just want to hide the fire in the city.
We need that ARPA funds, that it's different than It's always the paid ones. At least we still have our volunteers. But something might come up we might get away from. Maybe we'll get some new volunteers for all the stuff.
Yeah, maybe. I mean, we still advertising, but
Huh?
I said, we still advertising, but losing them.
Shaq, what do you think you'll need for operating supplies this year? Not fixing the truck, not that stuff, because that goes under repairs, but.
I mean, that's the, still over there, but outbreak is broken.
Is that like their radios and all of that?
Well, we got, we got radios, right?
They're all dispersed out.
What's something else you think you'd want next year?
Equipment wise, I mean, we still got budget, hose testing and all that stuff in there. Pump testing, all that, extrication tools, all that stuff.
Can you ride a Caleos for next meeting?
On this, on the operating supplies, did some of the repairs come out of that? That's a lot, well, that's a big jump.
Repair and maintenance is up there.
So, okay, so we, we had it at 4,000, but we spent 24,000.
Well, operating supplies is, it's equipment.
Wasn't that like the dive stuff?
That's probably gonna be your dive, equipment.
Radio is expensive too.
Yeah, and I mean, the sub on all the
Not 12, 13. Yeah, after it was said done, that was
Radio.
12,000 out there. Think I don't have to worry about, because yours is a president. I don't have to do that this year.
Not that.
Don't doubt it, don't doubt it. We've got new radios, right? I think that was, Josh didn't say that was the other big expense on there.
I got new radios, yeah.
I'm Mr. Garrett, can you get us the list? Did you think you might need to spend money and think, oh, we didn't stop? Maybe get a copy of this sheet from Candace and go over it, look at it yourself and see if you can tell where those expenses aren't gonna be an issue this year. That may help us out too. All right, the street department.
We went over not quite 20,000 on salaries. Now keep in mind, because this is last year's audit, it's really not reflective of last month, okay? It's as close numbers as we can come with what's, what's being spent. So we obligated, or we budgeted 96,900 and we spent 113,000.
Okay, but we have cents cut out overtime.
Right.
Cut it back to emergency.
In the street department, we're sitting down all the time, really. I don't know, isn't it a gamble? It's not bad, but.
I think it's good, but isn't it broken up, Candace correct me if I'm wrong? Part of the outside employees, same as the inside employees, part of them are paid out of streets and part of them
I think, I think mine's all something different, I think.
Yours and Carolyn's is water sewer.
Yeah.
And you have to split somehow. So that
I think this is gonna be, I can look, you know.
So we, but we recently taken action on the overtime, emergency callouts. So that number to me shouldn't be that high this next year.
Yeah, that was, that's for your, that's Rusty and Logan and Chad.
How much are y'all in here? Uh, I'll give y'all my opinion. You're gonna have some upcoming expenses that we ain't got yet for these generators. You have a phone line, right, Jason?
We got one generator and they haven't finished it yet.
No, I'm talking about the new generator.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, when I would have a phone line.
Yeah, you're gonna have, you got some expenses coming on, let's do it quick. I'd make allowances somewhere. I would really think about cutting one out of sewer and water. You cannot keep going in the hole.
You mean, you got employee out of, outside workers, not, because we just said that
We've only got Jason and Carolyn in sewer and water.
Well, we just need combined.
And then in streets.
What about my idea I gave you? That'll save a lot of money.
Yeah, and Jason, we put Jason on salary. But if he goes on salary, does a good job at the end of the year, you need to.
So my idea was put me on salary, give me 40 ex, instead of giving me, give me 40 extra hours a year vacation or whatever, however many y'all wanna give me. And then that way you save you money.
That'll save you money.
Yeah.
So you want an extra week vacation on salary, is that what you're saying? Well, salary at the rate of pay that you're making now, your hourly rate?
I'm hourly now.
At your hourly rate now, is what I'm asking, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, yeah, that'll save y'all money. I mean, because I, I mean, if a list station goes down, well, you seen me Friday, nobody knew that I was out there to see you. I mean, I didn't clock in, then clock out, it's gonna save money.
Michelle, are we good with that?
Um, what are you gonna be banning?
The same.
Same thing you're making now. But it'll still be called in.
That way, if I, if I come in, because like right now, if a list station goes down right now and I'm not on call and they have no clue what to do, they have to call me.
Right, but you're always still working your regular hours.
Yeah, 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 yeah. But that way it covers my overtime. It hurts me in the long run.
But you wouldn't have to then take the callouts otherwise for any other reason, right?
And that would save y'all, I mean, it'd save you a lot too.
You still may not take a call out for anything.
Well, no, I mean, for being on call, being on call, as far as being on call.
You get called out, so you get
I mean, yeah, that way if I get called out, I don't get, I just get my, you know, it saves the city a lot of money.
And you want the same hour you pay to do that?
Either that or just give me a lot, give me a lot more vacation and then I can use it later on.
We can give you some time.
I'm sick, my vacation, salary.
Hey, whatever y'all want with that.
Thank you, Mr. Michelle.
Run down, I get 80 hours a year, is all I get. And I've been here almost 10 years.
What do you make an hour?
I don't even.
Not take dollars?
Yeah.
One dollar, one million dollars.
Barely, he barely will qualify for overtime exempt.
See what?
He barely meets the minimum for
Salary.
So you can be, you can be salary but not overtime exempt. In order to reach the overtime exemption, he has to be paid at least 684 a week and you're paid at 7.
Yeah.
He's, he bear minimal to be exempt.
So that's a good thing.
I mean, I know it's gonna hurt me a little, but it really is. Because I work nonstop, but I mean, I don't have the choice, it's, I mean. But I mean, I don't have the choice, it's, I mean...
Well, what I will say before, before that was brought up, about the, all the employees being paid out of different departments. We know as far as the outside workers go, in streets and in water and sewer, that since we've cut out the overtime, and we've cut out that, that we're not gonna have... it's as much payroll expense, that's what's listed here for twenty-five, in streets or in waters, so we should, that should be able to come in.
We hope, yeah.
And depending on what Michelle says about that, or if that's something you want to think about, because it's gonna have to be voted on.
Yeah, I, I, I hear that.
You need to, you know, run the numbers separate, we need to know from Michelle if it's legal and...
Or either I get, or get annual leave, I mean, I don't know if I can do that, but... Because I don't get annual leave now, I get sick leave now.
Don't you get a vacation?
I, yeah, I get a vacation. I mean, that's what I mean.
Sick leave's supposed to be used if you're sick.
That's another time, only if you're sick.
And then only that's, but it's supposed to come with a doctor's note after three days.
Three days.
I believe it's in the handbook that way.
It is in the handbook. That's the only thing, thing about cutting money, can you get some money built back up?
Captain Boyd.
Let me ask y'all something. Y'all fill me in, since I wasn't heard here earlier, not if I was talking to, uh, Mr. Pitt, but anyone. So, y'all cutting out overtime, right?
They've already had.
Basically, yeah.
We're supposed to have one person on call.
This is, since I've been on council fifteen years, we never had, cause I remember, had four employees. I'm blessed to have four employees to work, or full-time employees to work in public works. With that said, I know Jason's a good guy, Jason has to be called out a lot, since he said the other three don't know what to do. I understand Jason's point, but the thing is, cities like county, uh, broken. If you don't watch it, y'all will get in some serious, serious trouble, and y'all hit it that way. But the thing is, y'all got to cut overtime out of period, you know, stick to it, I understand Jason, he gets called out, he's gonna have to take out for following week. If you got four employees following week working, Jason's gonna take off. Now, the city cannot afford paying him overtime here.
Well, what we, what we agreed upon and voted on was stop all overtime unless there was an, an emergent situation. And that would be determined by the mayor and whichever department had it was, that overtime's gonna be...
What we do now is we, we message them.
It would be reported to the clerk, so the clerk could let the rest of the council know. That's why we set it up, because we don't, there's been too much overtime. After hours stuff, that could possibly wait till the next day on emergency calls. So, we recently cut all that out, set it with the mayor and whichever department had had the emergency, so we could quell all of that.
Yeah. I know Jason, he's still off on Fridays, right? I've seen Jason a lot working on Fridays, you know, and, you know, as a commissioner, I wanted, you know, because the city can't afford overtime. I know that, y'all know that, we're gonna issue right now, in the city, I'm trying to get that one. As a commissioner and, uh, you know, county's in the same shit yard, you know, we've got a disaster happening right now on Creek Road. We do not have the money to fix it. Fixing potholes on Creek Road, six hundred thousand dollars, right now. Right, we're looking at two years, if we get approval, a grant in October, two years, we've been paid. The county can't stop making trucks on that road, they own it every day. So, we working on it, our employees, we twelve employees short, the county does it right now. So, you know, we went running in the same situation as the cities are, and, uh, but, you know, as, as a council member, you know, there's no way y'all can pay overtime here, you know? And I understand this, so this is the situation, I might have to cut employees back until y'all get back on your feet, you know, I don't know, but, uh, you know? When is finalized budget, or when are y'all...
This is our first meeting on it.
Yeah, it'll be September.
So, you looking at something that's a lot?
Yeah.
All right, well, as we move through these meetings, we need to take the mayor's suggestion to heart, and work these numbers. I know, I know that we'll all take this home with us, and we won't just be discussing, you know, I mean, we'll be looking at it at home, that's the only way we're gonna...
Do you mean cut all the way, or cut back to overtime, or cut out? For re, for reference on, if I'm working on numbers.
I'm sorry, Doc, what'd you say? Out? Out. Okay, we got the numbers on out. Where are you at?
All right, that's the street department, is there anything else? In that department?
We seem to be pretty, pretty spot on everywhere else, and for, from last year to this year, I think, so what?
The operating supplies is around a little over seven thousand more than we...
Yeah.
Budgeted for. Everything else is close. Health insurance is two thousand less, so it's...
That's, that's the question.
Okay. Your cemetery expenses is just the, um, the lawn care there?
Jason, would you drop that box at cemetery, put our box, this will...
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
On the operating supplies, what, is that just because everything's went on? That they went up?
Um... That could be... if they had to have melon, or they have to go get that hot patch, or whatever they put on Church Street, and we, if they try to keep the streets where they can drive down them, so it costs us...
Yeah.
It costs the city money for that.
And that...
And by the way, I left a copy of the county commissioners' phone numbers at everybody, uh, thing, talking about streets. They're on your, at your spot there. Um... But yeah, it's gonna cost us more to keep, the holes are just getting bigger, so it costs more to fill them in.
Yeah, we... Need to call our county commissioners.
Hey, well, I got y'all here, all of y'all. Uh, I left a copy with Candace, she give y'all a copy. Uh, call the commissioners, call them, we do it still. Uh, the thing is, I brought the issue up before the board, they turned me down three to two. Uh... The way I see it, y'all pay city taxes and county taxes here in this city. Y'all registered voters, go after them three, three, I left the names, call them, and, uh, just tell them. Miss Wing got on one of them in the fray, but if you get on to them, I think, you know, we'll bring it back up in workshop. And, uh, the, the problem is, the county has the equipment to fix the road. Cold peppers, it'll look like cold pepper, uh, until it gets paved down the road, we got Holmes Valley like that, we done, front roads like that. County has equipment, all it has to cost is two or three days of labor of our guys to fix the road. Right now, I just went down it, I just got another listing from Mr. Pitt about it. There's nothing I can do, but y'all can, y'all sitting in them seats for a reason, call them, honestly, listen, I want to, I want to meet with y'all and just tell them what it is. You know, the city's never, I've been in that seat fifteen years, far as I know, we've never had the county give us nothing, no help fee. We got seven tenths of a road over there that is left, that's the only road over there that hasn't been paved. And one of their concerns was, who's gonna maintain it, that's what come back on man. Mr. Griffin brought it up, well, we got cold peppers right up the road, if the city has a problem with it, just run there and fix it. If not, y'all got a brand-new tractor, I brought it up, city owns a tractor, box plate, they'll fix all that. All it is, they tear that road back up completely, repack it with a packing machine, and them roads has been done three to four months, all around, we got none of them. We got one hole in Casey Road. One hole, one hole's coming Casey Road down. You drive Casey Road thirty-five miles an hour, you might hit a hole. So, it's working until the city gets a grant, whenever, if y'all ever do get a grant, or the county, we can turn some money loose in District Three. The thing is, and I'll tell y'all, we got an issue right now in our county, with the county stepping inside the cities. That's my concern as a commissioner, it shouldn't be like that, and I'm telling y'all right now, I got a problem with that. You know, because y'all vote, the city votes for these county commissioners, it's county-wide voting, and the county got a lot more money than the city of Vernon does, in the city of Wausau, city of Ebro, and city of Carroll. All it has to do is put a stipulation on it, to save city of Vernon. This, we fix the road up to a mile, then if one of the commissioners has a problem in Carroll, they fix the road up to a mile. That was another concern, you know? We know there's plenty of roads in this county that's messed up, but, uh, that road over there's been an issue a long time, and we have caught trouble with that road.
So, the reason that they wouldn't go along with it was because they have, in their districts, they have issues with roads?
Well, biggest concern, same issue is, is, uh, uh... It's the animal control issue in camp, in city, they have a problem with that, and we have a problem with that right now. Uh, I've done some research on that issue today for Mr. Pittin too, and Mr. Pittin's on the right track, I don't know where it's gonna go, but I'm gonna take it to the board in the workshop. But, uh, uh, another issue that come up was, uh, Mr. Alford's building over there, you know? That's the biggest kickback in the city when you step inside the city, but to me, as a commissioner, you know, county-wide vote, the city belongs to the county, you know? And we pay double taxes, you know, and that's what I explain to them, you know? Uh, I know the city has laws, and the county has to go by the city laws, and I tell y'all, issue, and I brought it up, people, y'all been, we've been fighting for years at, uh, AVNB down there. They come to the city, uh, county, and Mr. Pittin started running around, said, listen, that's not our, we don't step on the city's toes, we don't come inside the city limits, and it's their issues. Uh, they come for us for help to, uh, have y'all investigated. And, uh, and Mr. Pittin just stepped up, we didn't have to speak, and he turned him right back, said, listen, we ain't having no one in the city running investigated, you know? And, you know, it's always two sides of the street, and that's what I told the commissioners, they went out and talked to them, we had a recess at meeting, and I said, listen, y'all research that, it's always two sides of the sword now. And, uh, I told a couple of them, you know, my side, but anyway, I don't understand what's the big deal is going on right now between, you know, the county and the cities, but, uh... I know the county's broke, the slot in the city is, we have to watch what we do up there, but, and we short end. And, uh, y'all blessed to have four employees, so, right now, so, um... I know, like I told them, Miss Wing, fifteen years, I was even, we didn't have them four employees that I can remember.
You only had two for the, the whole city, just two?
Yeah.
That's all I...
But I'm here to help y'all anyway, I can help y'all, I take it back, I don't know everything, there's a lot to know. When I took that job, a lot of headaches, but, uh, I told Miss Wing, you know, I signed up for it, y'all supported me, a lot of people did, and I, I get out in certain people. I travel roads every Saturday, and, uh, they hate to see me in Casey City. I send videos in on Sunday or Monday, so I got videos, and I send them, that's also where to get people fireworks fixed and get the potholes and all that. And, uh, Holmes Valley's the issue this week, I mean, it's been a while since I've been on Holmes Valley, and I got sixteen potholes in Holmes Valley that my dad paved. And, uh, it goes right on down to the dirt road, I mean, it's the worst shape I've seen Holmes Valley in a while, so, uh, they working on it this week, uh, my employees also.
Well, we appreciate your input and your help, and I appreciate you trying to get, you only to do something with Church Street, and I bet we'd all agree that we will make the phone call. Maybe set, maybe set, see if, if they will sit down with some of us. Okay, we want to move on to...
Recation. I don't know why the Fourth of July event has to be under rec as far as, I know Nikki takes care of it, I don't mean that, but they put the expenses under rec, but the general fund pays for it. And I don't know why they continue to stick it under here, and then it makes rec look so bad, out of balance. Um, but Nikki's salary as rec director is also under here, it's also paid for under general fund, it always has been, it doesn't come out of the rec department?
What did the county say about that?
The county's the one that told me, yeah, we, so right here, you'll see funded by city of Vernon?
Yeah.
Okay, so, that's the above and beyond what the rec brings in.
Okay.
So, in other words, most of the twenty thousand dollar, well, I didn't put twenty thousand dollars on here for Fourth of July this year, because I know we don't have the budget for that, that's what fireworks costs. But that's what is what we budgeted last year. Whatever y'all tell me to put's what we're, we'll put, but right now, it's not showing us that. But see, Nikki's is actually paid for out of general fund, so that's part of the funded by city of Vernon part. And then the Fourth of July stuff with the fireworks is funded by the city of Vernon portion. Um... They did add the ATV payment in this year, so that's new, um... But a good portion of that is, it's just general fund, and it's always come out of general fund, but it shows up on her part, and it makes her look more out than... So, right, so this, so last year, they, from the audit, they brought in fifty-nine thousand six hundred seventy-four dollars and three cents, and that is everything, that's gonna be gate fees, registrations. Anything that went into the rec fund was fifty-nine thousand six seventy-four oh three, um, on the last audit. So, anything above that shows as funded by city of Vernon. Their insurance went up this year, too.
Was there grant money on there?
No, not on this, we took that, we backed the grant stuff out, yeah. Um... But the insurance went over four thousand on just one, so they can have, so they can play in the tournaments and leagues and stuff. So, that's all their insurance part combined, um... We did go over on operating supplies according to the audit.
Quite a bit.
But the rest of it was pretty much what was budgeted.
And I will say, the operating supplies, a lot of that was like, and along with the fire department, too, we did like the haunted hallway, like we normally don't, we haven't never done that before, so that did take some, both of ours. Operating stuff, too, with spending on that, and then, like with Johnsonwood keeps and stuff like that, so I, I'm confused at the whole rec budget, because I thought... The rec just does their own, like, budget, and then whenever Candace was telling me about us being, looking like it's, we're in the hole that much, I was like, oh my gosh, are you kidding me? But, um, I thought we didn't have quite decent this year, but I did go up on registration fees. I'm gonna have to probably go back up on concessions again, because I did that, uh, for this whole season, but...
How did you do on the concession on the board?
We did about twenty, a little over twenty-two hundred, so that was good, because like I wasn't expecting that at all.
You said a little lot.
Yeah.
And that line was out, that line was there the whole night.
The whole night, they had a line, they had a line the whole night.
Yeah, and very hard.
Till we shut the lights out and they had to go. It, well, with no more food?
No, it took no more.
And usually, sometimes we have skirt, but not this time.
Got to get all the food.
It was a very good turnout, I was pleased. And I hope that you're gonna get better, and maybe our guess we can stay.
Well, I will say, on the Fourth of July fireworks... no matter which portion of the budget it's in, it's still, no matter if it's recorded under rec, or if it's recorded under... no matter if it's recorded under rec, or if it's recorded under general, we have to decide how much y'all want to spend on that. Um, because it was an amazing fireworks show, and it was the most people I've ever, I think, seen out there. But when we're trying to cut the budget, y'all are gonna have to decide how much you wanna spend on fireworks. No matter which budget department it comes out of, it's still.
I ain't gonna go. I was the only one around on the Fourth of July.
You go what now?
I was the only one around on the Fourth of July.
So, uh, I, I would suggest Candace, I know I spoke to you one time before, and you said somebody had approached you about giving a quote.
Yeah.
Reach out to, um, Mr. Jesse with the power show that we've been dealing with. Given the fact that, uh, three minute last year and the five minute this year, and see if he's willing to be reasonable. And I know, and I know it didn't work out that way, but when we agreed on this amount, that they gave us the same price this year as they did last year, because what happened, some fundraisers are gonna go on to try to help, and that, that didn't happen. So, the total cost of that came out of the city not needing the fundraiser to leave, so.
That is true, but just as far as in general for plugging these numbers in, I need y'all to give me, that's be one of the things I need to, you know, I put eighty-five hundred in, which ain't gonna be much fireworks show, but I'm just saying, when we're trying to cut money, do you want, if you want me to put twenty thousand dollars in there, I will, but then we're an extra twelve thousand dollars more over budget.
What did we pay that this time?
It's like right at twenty thousand.
They're expensive.
I thought we had, even more.
It was, we just gave a deposit of the twelve, yeah, but last time we paid, I think, eighteen. The year before, sixteen. And we did it on the Fourth of July, which costs more this time. So, it is more to do it on the Fourth of July, and we had, they credited us some minutes, which we lost again this year, because the canister got wet or something, although the show was really great.
So, we reach out to them and the other person that you talked to versus, um, us trying to, I don't know how we do it ourselves. We need to get a fire problem, have any help. We would have to have somebody certified, I think.
You don't wanna do it yourself.
I, I would really like to stay with the company that we got, if we, if the rec support, because they've been, they've been very good. They've been good. And they got, they do shows all over, they do, they still doing, we, we all, I mean, they're, they're a good company, and they've worked with us even when there were issues.
I think just, as a, um, I'll say as a citizen, though, if we budget twenty thousand for fireworks and cut an employee, that's kinda.
Yeah, no, I understand what you're saying.
That, that, I, I don't like that, as a, just as a person. Um, so, obviously, I ain't voting on it, I'm sticking to numbers here.
And nobody's agreed to cut the employee.
No, no, but I'm just saying, as far as while we're looking at what we're gonna put, so maybe, maybe the, maybe then the rec would, if, if you wanna keep that, maybe it is a year-long fundraiser to pay for it or something. You know what I mean? I don't know.
But you don't know what we, if you don't have these fireworks?
Guess what?
Well, that's the other thing, is that the Fourth of July is really all.
Now, we got, they go crazy, and we don't have it. I mean, we're here.
They call me all day when I was in town.
Oh, y'all know, I love, I love it, because I love for our town to have something, a good spotlight, that's, I love that. But I'm just saying, on the cutting part of it, y'all gotta tell me what number to put in there.
It doesn't have to be forty-five dollars.
Well, we had, uh.
That's, that's.
Well, we had that hundred-year flood, or whatever that was.
You're not gonna get a good show if there's nothing on that.
Car, because they didn't have, and they know.
You won't get a good show for under twenty thousand.
Call, well, call, put them all, one of them, I suppose, they, they.
Well, they're all using the same company as you, they all use Pyro.
Yeah.
I started using them when I was with the TDC down there, and that was in nineteen ninety-nine.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure that we paying less than everybody else, right, to pay for them.
They pay a thousand dollars a minute at the Panama City Marina. It's a twenty-two-minute show for twenty-two thousand back then, probably twice that.
That's what we estimated, it was a thousand dollars a minute, but.
Do we ask the TDC for?
Well, the TDC's got, the TDC is, um, you know, they passed that bill to not give any funding to the TDC.
I thought that didn't pass, did it?
I thought it did.
I don't know, I thought it did. But they said it did. Well, if you go to TDC, what was the time, I think it was a thousand dollars or something, if that's your first time going to them.
Three.
I thought it was the.
Three, three thousand.
That's what it is, three.
For three years.
Yeah. If you go to them, and they won't help you to put it on that first time, they, it's one time they got banned.
No, three years.
Three years.
They'll give you three thousand for three years.
Okay.
But, I don't know about this new legislation, did, did you hear anything about that?
I thought they.
It may have.
Visit Florida's pretty strong lobby, and I'm sure they, they did everything they could to keep that.
Well, they was trying to disband them.
Which doesn't make any sense, because it's the tourists that pay the tax, it's not, you know, I don't understand it, but.
Okay, so anyway, when y'all think about it, or ideas for it, give me some numbers, so I got something to play with there.
Well, we can go through the TDC and ask them, so.
Like I said, if you. If you, um, talk to Jesse, maybe, um, see if he's willing to work something with us.
Okay.
I mean, exactly, they do owe us some minutes, and I, I, we need to come up with a number, maybe by the next budget meeting.
Well, probably in popular opinion, but maybe we skip the year.
Oh, no, you. Yeah, I'm not saying nothing to you. Do you want us to count? Tell him, Joey.
Next year, the two-hundred-and-fifty, that anniversary?
They.
Think about it also.
They, they don't think about the price and nothing.
Think about it also, they have some major breakdowns.
What about sponsorships?
Well, I understand that we've got grants coming in to try to fix.
That'd be exactly the way.
I mean, every single constitutional officer in this county sponsored the water malice, well.
Yeah.
Got any sponsorships?
Back then, I was working with the Columbia, three, three thousand dollars sponsorships for the water malice, and now it's about twenty-five. So, yeah, and next year's political year, so it should be easy to get money from guys that aren't running for office.
Hey, I would check around, because, I'll tell you, after I left the city, you know, I know our fireworks is always in the city. I checked other companies, because, uh, I went to fireworks show right after I was, uh, the guy spent four thousand dollars, and he went eight minutes short of lunch, and they was off. And he spent four grand, so, that's one thing.
He did it, he, he went and bought them and did it, right?
Now, with that sitting out, the guy that's popping vernons is licensed, you know? These two cats is popping theirs with license, so that, that plays in, in a lot, a lot, uh, but.
I checked them, I go, seventy thousand dollars is a lot of money for a fireworks.
The ones that used to shoot vernons out, that worked for the same company, open body.
They quit.
They were good friends of mine, they can get the license.
I think we talked about one time, since it's somebody at school or something, or do the thing.
Okay, um, anything else in that one? So, we know that the fireworks is an issue. Fireworks is questionable. Operating supplies, we'll just cut, cut that back down to the previous year. Are you good, Nikki, with that, probably? Because you said you had the extra stuff this year, right?
Yeah, because it, that's, that's over double.
Are we gonna sit y'all fun? We don't have none, because the power bill's taken it all. I talked to Chris Pope today, he's our person for the city of Vernon through, um, Florida Power Lights. He sent me meter number, he said that basically, he's gonna, he could come out, but basically, they don't keep track of what goes to what. So, that's gonna be an electrician, but we should not have the two power bills that we have here.
And, we'll have to find some breaker box to get it, put the breakers or something.
Well, but all the buildings are empty, and they're not on, they're not turned on, they're not powered. I mean, I, it doesn't make any sense. And all of these lights are LED, you can see the little dot-dot-dots as you look up in there. They're all LED, we already had an evaluation, they came out and looked at all of those.
None of the ball fields are on it.
They all pay the, no, rec pays their own.
Street, street lights are not on it.
That's right, but we have thirty-two different power bills. Every month.
And the highest ones are right here.
Other than the plant.
What's the plant run?
It's run about what this runs. Anywhere from twelve to fifteen hundred a month.
Yeah, I think, it's running them blowers, it's running.
Yeah, but this isn't running anything.
I'm talking about the plant, I'm talking about, yeah.
That's what.
I get the plant, I don't get here.
Something's wrong. You said somebody was coming out, though.
Yeah, but, I mean, we've been talking about this, you know, for what, two years, and.
You can't get anybody to come.
They can't figure it out. We need an electrician.
Yeah, electrician come look at it, and then they won't show back up.
Well, that's true.
When all of that, but then that's gonna cost the city too, if we have to hire an electrician. And there's somebody responsible at.
Going bound, right? They said that they don't, they, they know that the, where the meters are, basically, they know the meter number that goes with the bill, but they cannot, if you got fi, six meters sitting out there, just sitting out there random, they can't. He said that they don't know what everything operates.
But they need to.
And he, I talked to him at length today, like, probably thirty minutes today, asking the same question, trying to get a different answer. I mean, he, that's, that's what they told me.
I guess that's our local person, or is there somebody else?
He's not here, he's the, he's the regional person over us. So, even if I talk to Tracy Andrews, she's gonna connect me with Chris, so. Um, I don't know, all I can say is, it's kill, it's killed our budget, I mean.
Well, but not only that, but I mean, you're talking about Florida Power Light, they got to have somebody that can figure out what's going on in here.
If they did, an energy audit.
Well, the energy audit consists of, these windows aren't double paying, these lights are LED, all of our units are old, um. I mean, that's what they told me when they, when I asked them to, yeah.
Call Jason, call Brian tomorrow, see if he, he's got one of those meters that you put on, or the wire tells you how much it's burning. It's on the way, we'll figure it out.
Home meter?
Yeah, no.
Anyway, other than that, we are good, we don't have any rent coming in from the community center, and we possibly won't till next May. They have it till next May to finish it. Have they started to do anything? They, we, we had a meeting last week, and they are, we went over the things that need to be done. I asked them to cut the frivolous things that would spend city's money, and, um, that we wanted to most bang for the buck. So, they're still working on the, the design plan of it, and we have to have the asbestos and radon testing done. So, we have to have, um, asbestos abatement, so they're working on that right now.
Okay, so, um, Candace, the attorney's, um, services, are they budgeting into this?
Yes, that's.
From the letter?
Yeah.
Okay. Do I need to put that on the next regular meeting to be voted on?
Yeah. I just put it in there so you would know why the professional services went up.
That's a deal.
Okay, it's, or is it, okay, just budget it in, or is it something that has to be voted on, that's why I'm asking?
It doesn't have to be voted on.
Um, so, under city hall, we've got repairs and maintenance, fifteen thousand, we still need to fix the floor, and we got broken air conditioners everywhere, so. Probably is not gonna happen, but, um, so, we can't get the utilities cut, so we're gonna have to cut it somewhere. And we're not gonna have any rental fee for another year. We are getting rent from the gym, and that's going into the city hall fund.
Well, we could've been renting it out now if they had.
Well, the air's broken, most of the lights aren't running. And I think one bathroom's working in each side. Uh, what is the next one, where's sewer? Okay. The little side notes are where I did the rate increases that went in a few months ago. Um, you gotta keep in mind that they'll go up again in January, but so will the waste management. Um, so, right now, we're covered under the waste management, as far as garbage, you'll see the income up at the top, or the, and the expenses down at the bottom. One of the biggest things there was the salaries. This is what was, this was what was actually paid out versus what was budgeted, I believe, under expenses, so that'll be different if Jason goes on salary, or if all the overtime and all that's gone. Professional services has been repair stuff, where we had to hire other people to come in. We upped the utilities just a little bit, you'll see it's an even number, we just took last year's. Uh, Florida Power Lights did come a couple of months ago and say, "Hey, we're upping the prices here coming soon," so.
On the professional services, I'm sorry, back up, but on the professional services, do you think it's gonna be, that much is gonna be needed?
With things breaking, it could be, I, I don't, I mean, we could put four thousand or ten thousand, but, it's band-aided, it's got a band-aid on it.
You got it wrong.
So.
Maybe we'll get lucky and we'll have to use that, that much.
Operating supplies, you can see, went way, way, way over. Um, and that's because he's trying to keep it running with chemicals and whatnot to make it work.
That's chemicals, because we can't waste. I said, that's, we're using a lot of chemicals.
Yeah.
Because we can't waste.
Yeah, but we've cut that off now. Yeah, we've cut that back.
But basically, right here, you can see how come we're out of budget for this year. I mean, and that ain't Jason's fault, that you gotta pour chemicals to it to make it keep going.
And thankfully, we've got a grant that's gonna fix it all.
Yeah, spray Jesus, um.
Once it fixes, once the grant comes, so it should be back to me pretty much, which, I understand.
Yeah, but if we don't, then again, if we don't start building, I think it's wanting back up.
I tell you, me and Jenny talked about this, he, you know, I guess back when they built that, you know, he, he told me that, you know, basically, if we don't put money back, when they do this grant, start putting money back, and just leave it alone, we're gonna be right back where it was.
Yep.
I think it's so good. I think it's a good station.
The problem with the plant, it runs off air. Air is my life down there. I have to have air. If it, if I lose a compressor, I got one backup. And if I, you know, I lost both of them when I was in St. Augustine. So, you know, if I lose air, the sewer's down completely. There's no sewer at all. So that's, that's the problem with that plant. It's all air, it's all air. Everything runs off air.
The septic station, once that is done, will bring in income for water and sewer. And that will be amazing. And just a thought to throw out there is you take a portion of that and put it in a fund.
Yeah.
Just for.
Just for the future parts, for the septic station and the plant. Because the septic station will eventually get old and then it's gonna have to be fixed too. Of course, we can't budget that in 'cause we don't know when it's gonna be completed and we don't know what the income will be. So your salaries for the water sewers should be around seventy-five thousand.
Instead of the one I said.
Right. Garrett and I just talked and thought that we should put the last audit number in there instead of whatever y'all was cut because you needed a realistic view.
So that's almost thirty right there.
Mm-hmm.
That you cut off.
But until everything is fixed, I sure wouldn't take it out of operating supplies or repairs and maintenance, 'cause please gotta keep it going. It's the only thing that actually makes money for the city.
Next year, probably looking at, we've been on the sewer plant after a while.
On the, on the, the grant for the, for the, for the plant?
Yeah.
We just got some release of funds for that, so I'm gonna say.
Two more years, probably.
Well, we're probably a year from it being done. They're, they're gonna, we should go putting stuff out for bid in the next three or four months. But then you got their, like, the, the, the actual work. So it could be a year to a year and a half. We haven't, I, I wanna say we're supposed, we have to have it finished by the end of twenty-six. There's a lot of grant numbers in my head. I apologize without having my little cheat sheet that I make in front of me.
Well, still, now we at least gotta cover a year, a year and a half of breakdowns on the plant.
Yeah, I'm just, personally, I'm not comfortable cutting that number down 'cause they're gonna have to keep fixing it till it's, it's ready. And then great, if they don't have to spend it, it's there.
Yeah.
Um, but you can see, we just combined the garbage charges all under one. It, um, instead of doing it line item, and we did the same thing up top, what we're bringing in for, what we'll be bringing in for garbage versus what we're spending. So we're, we're safe. January, though, we'll have to go, y'all already approved all that, so it'll go up again in January. I mean, y'all did that a couple of years ago under an ordinance. And the same with the water and sewer.
Okay, so right now with the operating supplies going back in rec to normal and with the salaries and water and sewer going back to seventy-five thousand, we're at forty-five thousand is a good, out of the hallway?
Forty-five thousand coming off of what we're short already, so.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
So we still got a lot more to.
Yeah.
Work on. Yeah. Now, this, this back page under salaries is what it's supposed to be. I took out, just for this meeting for reference, the on-call pay and the overtime pay. That was in there in the last year's budget. Um, I don't know that it weren't been saved to city any money. So I, I just, for, for reference for y'all to see, I took that out. The actual cost to the employer down here typed out is not the same as pay 'cause you've got your insurance and your FRS and so all of that is added in.
That's all of it.
Right. Um, but if you put the on-call back in, that's gonna increase that number. So I think that's a, y'all have to decide if you want somebody on-call or not on-call.
You gotta have somebody sometime. We'll figure that out.
And that is
This is, this.
Twelve thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars more with the on-call pay. And that's not in here.
Yeah, okay, this sheet is for this new budget here.
Well, this, it's what it was supposed to be last year without the on-call pay in there and budgeted in.
It's not what it ended up being.
Right, right.
This upcoming budget.
Jason, when you get a call that says mostly people wanted their water turned off, they got busted.
Most of them, most of the calls that, here, in the last, just say in the last three months, most of them was either circling, was, that's always, you know, I don't have to go on those. You know, we had two lightning strikes and then we had new lead and coppers. And then the lift stations was going down 'cause, you know, I don't have no backup generators on, so. Then, um, that's, that's the main stuff, really, and the storms.
Yeah, we get called from citizens, so.
And Pike.
With busted lines and they want you to come out and drink the water.
See, we have to go out there no matter what, even if it's on their side, 'cause we don't know. A lot of times, yeah.
And they can call the one.
Yeah. But, I mean, like, if, if they call at twelve o'clock at night and they got word in their yard and, you know, they call us and we, you know, go out there and it's underneath their house, you know, we tell them, yeah, still call up, you know.
We have to turn the water off.
And we turn the water off and it's on them, you know, but that's the main.
But that's not necessarily, you could wait till tomorrow in a situation like that. It's not what you know about.
The water run, I mean, it's not be all.
It's gonna be, when I, well, I'm just saying, in an instance like that, where it's going on the ground, they're gonna end up getting an adjustment anyway.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Most time we just, if it, if we don't know, like, the one right down here, we're waiting on a locate, come back home, you know. Yeah, we, we just let it alone till we get located, but it's all waiting on.
But we're talking about like midnight calls or?
Yeah.
How many midnight calls you get before somebody called you?
Uh, well, I think I done it here lately. It's been pretty good here lately. So it's slowed down. Pike was our major, yeah, that was, that was our major thing there for a while.
That's right. We understand about the locate. You can't do nothing about it.
Yeah. All right, that's, it's actually got a little easier.
Is there anything else, guys? Anybody? We're not. Guys, a budget workshop, a regular monthly workshop, call it a order. Number one electric at city hall facilities, we pretty much discussed. Is there anything else?
We got this, that water hose right there, Sean, and I've got one more, that's, I've got to look up one of them.
I'm sorry, I said every.
The water hose right there, Sean.
Yes, yes.
Yeah. I'll have to look at one more, 'cause I'm here.
Okay, yeah, I'll pass this down to you, 'cause I guess this is gonna come up in our next.
I hope we can probably pull it in, so I finally write orders.
Okay, and you provided us, is that what these two, the?
I provided, got orders, so everybody can have a copy of them. What I did is Sean Boylan's got a water hose running from the neighbor's house to his house. And we got a neighbor that's pulled a camper up in there, done his waste water into his waste water. We know for, that the water hose is illegal according to Jimmy, by D E P's law. Uh, but we don't know about sewer. I got to look up another one tomorrow. Uh, so why? Do you know that, Michelle, do you know that state statue off the top of your head? I'm gonna look it up. I need to get that and just carry that around here too. I'll be glad, take care of it.
There's a newer ordinance that I know, I just, I was working on the budget stuff and I didn't get the look. Miss Carolyn did look back for the past ten years or so and didn't find it, but I, I know that y'all have one.
I think that's our new September.
Yeah.
I thought we, yeah, my grandfather sent me.
So, but we found, we know that that was like in September. I found those minutes.
Yeah.
Um, but I, I didn't get to delve any, any deeper into it.
Well, they might have been while they're in for the hurricane.
Well, that was just for ones that was already existing, right? That was not new ones.
No, we let, at one point, it was.
It was five, it was five.
This was like a two thousand fifteen.
Five campers, I think it was, like, halls.
Yeah, that was grandfathered in, but I'm talking.
They've been there forever.
We allowed during Hurricane Michael, I think, a year, and then we extended it a year.
That's right, yep.
Okay, Mr. Garrett, this, um, Florida statute, does that go with this ordinance?
That's just a word that, yeah, y'all said y'all have. Some of them will be coming up in the future.
I'm talking about this, uh, Florida statute.
State statue.
So that's a big.
That's because we got a neighbor also that's starting taking a bunch of junk in over there.
There's several else.
Right down there, right down, uh, right down at Hill Street, that new house back there.
Oh, at the end?
Yeah, I'm sure you're right.
I just, I, I thought it had to do with this, that's why I asked. So is that everything for the workshop? Yes, sir, can I have a measure to adjourn? You have a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Period.